For the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council meeting, Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Present.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Thank you. Here. Action from closed session, Mr. Alave.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session tonight to discuss the one item on the agenda, an item of anticipated litigation. The council discussed that one matter with staff, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. If you will now join me for the invocation with Pastor Bernie Federman, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
As the basis for my invocation, I turn to the words of one of the wisest, most influential, richest men of his time. He was also a king, his name was Solomon, and he said, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart, and lean not on your own understanding, but in all your ways acknowledge him, and he will guide you and make your paths straight." So dear God, I'm asking you for your help this night. Those of us who believe in you and know you, we join our faith together, and not just for this meeting with the needs and requests before this council, and not just for the upcoming budget workshops as important as they are, but for our entire city, we need your help. With all our skills and talents, our positions, we are not you. We are frail, we are weak, and you are supreme and eternal, all wise. So God, I pray that we will reach out to you and find supernatural strength and comfort that only comes from your hand and from your heart. May we allow you to love us, and may your love overflow us. And in that, remind us that we can love each other without agreeing, and we can disagree without hatred. Grant our mayor and our council, our city manager, our department heads and leaders and staff, the graciousness and understanding of what it takes to lead a city in these times. And we ask you to stand with us as we stand against darkness and evil, deception, lawlessness and violence. And as our summer is upon us, God, I don't think there's a person here that wouldn't agree with me, will you watch over our children and our youth? May you help us together to watch over them as well. And for those in our community and region who are facing some very tough times and find themselves in situations they've never dreamed possible, may they place their trust in you with all of their heart and receive your comfort. And God, I ask you to protect those who serve us and protect us. Honor them as they do their jobs with diligence. Keep them alert and protect their minds and souls from the effects of all the things they deal with and see on a daily basis. And finally, dear God, I would be remiss if I didn't ask you to help the many fine volunteers working diligently to put together our Flower Festival and our Flower Festival Parade, and the young ladies working so hard to become festival queen. May you guide our city, watch over her, protect her, and use us all to add value to our town, the town that we love. In your mighty name, I pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just a reminder before we begin with our regular agenda, to silence your cellphones or turn them off. Thank you. We had a presentation made on June 13th, 2019 by Councilmember Cordova, presenting proclamations to the Lompoc Elks Public Safety Award recipients, Trent Ogan and Luis Farah Jr. of the Lompoc Fire Department, and Joseph Bailey Jr. and Vincent Magayan of the Lompoc Police Department. So congratulations to those firefighters and police officers who received that honor from the Lompoc Elks Public Safety Awards, and to the Lompoc Elks for awarding that. We will now have a presentation from the Central Coast Literacy Council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members and community members. It's an honor to be here. We really just want to make our folks aware, our community awareness about our literacy program, so I will go ahead and start the presentation. So the Lompoc Literacy Program is right now under the operation of Central Coast Literacy The Lompoc Literacy Program is dedicated to tutoring individuals to read, write, and understand English. Established in 1989, the Lompoc Library recruits and trains volunteer tutors to teach learners how to become literate in English. The tutoring and instructional materials are provided to the learners at no cost. So as of 2014, Central Coast Literacy Council entered into a contract with the City of Lompoc to run the operations of the program, and we have since been running, and it's been a great collaboration between both entities. How do we accomplish our mission? The first way that we accomplish our mission is through one-to-one tutoring. So one-to-one tutoring is a very individualized tutoring, just as it states. It could be for someone with a very particular goal, perhaps someone that does not know how to read. And we only serve adults, anyone over the age of 18. All the tutoring happens at the library, and these two learners set goals with their tutors. We have volunteer tutors that help. And basically, it could be someone that needs to learn how to read, it could be someone that wants to pass their citizenship, or perhaps they want to be active in their community and be able to vote and understand the whole voting process. So that's one-to-one tutoring, and those goals, there's not, it could be one goal, it could be up to 10 goals, and our tutors help our learners accomplish those goals, one goal at a time. And then we also offer Rosetta Stone services, and what that is, is it's an addition to the tutoring program. So if someone wants to meet with their tutor, in addition to that, they can come into the library and do the computers and learn the Rosetta Stone program to help them with their pronunciation. And that just expedites the learners. We find that learners that do that additional service also learn a lot quicker. It's a great service. Those programs cost a lot. If a learner was to go out and buy Rosetta Stone, it's a few hundred dollars, so it's great to have that available at no cost as well. And most recently, we are super excited. We, obviously, everything that we do, I work together with Sarah Blile, our library director, and we received funding from the California State Library Services to launch a family literacy program. And that was in and of itself a great accomplishment because in that, we are able to help low-illiterate adults, but not only the adults, we're able to work with the children and the parent as a family component, which is critical in the learning of reading for a child's education. Creates an opportunity for families to develop a culture of positive learning experiences. They come in, they work at the library with the staff, both the library staff and Central Coast Literacy staff, and basically, they go home with tools to help them be able to exercise that and work closely with their children. And everything, again, is at no cost, which makes it really convenient for some of our folks to be able to just walk in and utilize all the tools that we have for them. Literacy statistics, according to ProLiteracy, 36 million American adults need literacy help. As of the census in 2010, I'm actually looking forward to our next census, but I would call this an epidemic. It's a staggering number. It showed that we have 76,000 folks in our county that are illiterate, so that is a very high number. And we are glad to be able to reach out to those folks, and we cannot do that without the help of our volunteers. They are the base of our program. According to the report in the United States Department of Education, the single most significant predictor of a children's literacy in there is their mother's literacy. Has been shown the best way to ensure that children become successful in school is to address the literacy needs of the adults in their lives. So that is obviously key. We need to not just help the children at the school, but we're also helping their parents through our program, and together, they will be able to accomplish their literacy goals. Seventy-five percent of state prison inmates did not complete high school or can be classified as low-illiterate. Ninety-five percent of those incarcerated are reintegrated into our communities. Research shows that inmates who are educated are 43% less likely to return to prison. So we do work with folks coming out of prison. A lot of them do not know how to read or write, and so we're able to empower them by giving them the tool that they need to get back into their community, not just learn how to read and write, but be successful growing, you know, being able to help their families, but also enter into the workforce or education. We do work with Hancock, that is my timer, just to keep on track. So that is key. There's a high correlation. If you look at statistics, you just Google that, and it's just staggering. It's just daunting to see the correlation between illiteracy and incarceration. But we can definitely make a difference with the program that we're running here in your city. And then, a study conducted by the U.S. Department showed that low-illiterate adults are less likely to vote than strongly readers, and also become more active in their communities as their reading and writing skills improve. So for many years, I worked here in Lompoc, working with the Restorative Justice Program, that's working with juvenile delinquents that actually get to meet their victims, you know, face to face, and take accountability for their actions. And the number one reason that all those juvenile offenders told us during the intake process that they commit these crimes, it was because they, their parents did not become involved in their education. Therefore, they lost interest in their education, and where they found their sense of identity was committing crime. So, again, literacy is key to helping these parents be able to become part of a child's education. When you speak to the adults in our program, sometimes they're in tears. They want to be involved in their child's education, but they don't know how to communicate in the school. So it's just an effect that trickles down, and then they're not involved at all, and starts a cycle of criminal activity in their kids. For 2018, our program's statistics, we have 41 tutors. I see some of them in the audience, so thanks for coming out. And those tutors give anywhere from an hour, sometimes they give up to four or five hours, and without them giving those hours, we would not be able to run the program. We serve 51 adult learners, and over 95% of those adult learners reached at least one of their goals. So that is really good, again, because they're hopeful, because they're there voluntarily. So all of our learners are eager to learn and reach those goals. Some of our learners have now become volunteers in the community, which is great to see that. So they're turning around and giving back. Some of our learners also want to turn around and tutor other learners. So it's really a great domino effect. It's just really helping bring down illiteracy. I have a video that I'd like to show. It's a minute, a minute. It's not, it's not playing. Okay. That was a learner that had a testimony. But basically, you are welcome to come to the library at any time and meet with us. You'll also meet some of our learners. They're always at the library with their tutors. And people often ask, you know, "How can we help? How can we make this literacy program vibrant? How can we be part of that?" One of the ways is to become a tutor. And people often say, "Well, I'm not a teacher. How can I become a tutor?" The great news is that you don't need to be a teacher. You just need to know how to read, write, and speak English, because you have a great skill that others don't. And all you need is an hour of your time per week, and you can make a big difference and literally change someone's life. Or you can also become an office volunteer. We, if you come to us and you say you want to volunteer, you have a certain skill, most likely, we will never say no. We haven't How to contact us? We have, our office hours are Monday and Wednesday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And those are the hours also that tutoring happens, and beyond those hours as well at the library. We're in the Grossman Gallery. So if I may, I'd just like to open up, if anyone has a question or anything, I left some time for that. Any questions, comments?
Thank you so very much for organizing this presentation and for the important work that you do. I do know that you said you only provide service to adults, but you also partner with the adult school in Lompoc as well?
Yes, thank you for saying that. It's, family literacy is so new as of the last two months, that I, I'm still saying adults, but that is correct. Thank you. Yes, now we serve the children as well. We're also working with the Community Action Commission. We go out to the preschools and do storytime, and then we bring those parents into the library and work with them as a group. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation and for the important work you're doing in our community. And thank you to all the volunteers that work so diligently with this program, as well as to those of you that have successfully learned to read and write. I know that for some of you, that maybe you've made it all the way into your senior years and find it difficult to read books to your grandchildren. So I know of one individual who did attend this program and is thrilled that he can now sit down and read books with his grandchildren. So again, thank you for that and for sharing that this exists in our community and is free to those who need it.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. City Manager, report please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Not a very long one tonight. Just a reminder that next Monday, June 24th, 6:30 p.m. here in the chambers, we'll be having our presentation of the final budget to council for their approval, or if it is continued, then we'll be discussing our continuing budget resolution. And then we'll be moving into council discussions about any ideas for possible sales tax, as was requested at the last workshop. The other one is our, the Lompoc Flower Festival will be from June 26th to the 30th with the annual parade on the 29th, starting at 10:00 a.m. I was forgetful and didn't wear my colorful shirts this time, so I will be suggesting that at the workshop, the council and staff wear the appropriate attire to the next budget workshop in support of the Flower Festival. And that's it.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is a list of items considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. We will now open the floor for public comment on the consent calendar items, which is a maximum of three minutes, if there is anyone who would like to speak on a consent calendar item. Seeing no one rise for consent calendar, we will bring it back for motion and/or discussion. Council? Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move. We accept the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Here, here.
Yes.
Sorry, I did want to remind Councilmember Starbuck.
Thank you. I will recuse my vote on item five.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion for one through four from Councilmember, or just recused from the final vote?
Since it's on the consent calendar, he can just state his recusal on the record and then vote.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And I saw Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I'll give the second for items one through four, and then he can recuse himself on items five.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
I just, I just want to make sure we have a second on item five.
I'll second item five.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, thank you. Motion, seconded and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's And that passes 5-0. Staff presentation. Management Service Director Dean Albro will provide a brief presentation on the proposed 1921 draft budget.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm pretty honored to present the budget, the biennial budget for 1921. Just to go back and give you a little bit of history, normally, the process for doing the budget in the City of Lompoc is October, we start getting the numbers, goals, objectives, capital improvements. We have a lot of meetings. We talk about what our strategy is going to be. And this year, we did none of that. We implemented a Tyler-Munis, and we implemented a payroll system, pushed us about three months behind. In January, we kicked off the module in Tyler-Munis for the budget. We had a lot of classrooms. We had a lot of workshops. We had a very short deadline, but we got through it. We also had the challenges of trying to balance the general fund. So this has been a very trying budget year. But I'm very proud of what I'm presenting this evening. It's very well laid out. If I could, I'd like to say a few things that we changed in the presentation. I know I talked about this last time. We used to put two biannual budgets, our requested and then the proposed. We shift that in the back. You can see the supplement. We now do the actuals, and then this, this time, it'd be 2018 actuals, our projected for 2019, and then biannual budget year, each year. We also did a pretty big change in presentation that a lot of you guys caught in April and May in my presentation, and that's where we were moving a lot of the recreational and park funds into the general fund. We moved the recreational, revolving recreational fund, where we have all our recreational activities separate, and it was in, they were all in enterprise funds. We also put the Dewey Center in the, in the general fund, the Aquatic Center, and the campground. So you saw a big shift of about six, seven million dollars. So I kind of shied away from doing comparatives year-over-year for the general fund because of that reason, but the presentation, you can do comparatives on each line. So this is a draft budget. We'll, like, like we said, we'll bring it back on the 24th. If you want to adopt it with exceptions, you'll have that opportunity. And that's really all I have this evening, and we look forward to seeing you the 24th and talking about it. And also, we'll make sure this is on the website, and in the front lobby, there'll be a copy too, if you, in the library, if you guys, anybody in the audience wanted to look at it. Oh, it's currently on there. Thank you. That's all I have. If anybody had any questions, enjoy it. If you see anything that you want changed or anything, let me know. Come in my office, if I have an open door. Love to talk about it. There's some pictures of you guys, so. Oh, if I could too, I wanted to say thank you to Jasmine McKenty for, she was the one that did a lot of the artwork, publications, putting the goals and objectives, and helping me put this together. So special thanks to her for her hard work that she did in this.
Thank you, Mr. Albro, for that hard work, and we look forward to the discussion on Monday night.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We'll now move on to oral communications regarding any city-related matter. It is three minutes maximum. You come to the podium and queue up so that we are efficient tonight. If it's a matter that we have on the agenda, it would be helpful to wait till that item, but if it's going to be too far into the evening for you, you can speak to it this evening. Open the floor.
Good evening, Councilmembers. John Lynn, Lompoc resident. I'm voted to come and talk to you by a number of people. As we all know, a very large file came to us sometime Friday with regard to the zoning ordinance, and an awful lot of people are still trying to digest the first little bit of it. A suggestion was made that perhaps this evening, you could continue the item at the beginning of the meeting, so everyone wouldn't have to sit here until you ultimately continued it later, and that you could perhaps divide it into two continuances, a continuance to two weeks from now, so that the staff presentation could be made, and all of the people who wanted to talk about individual issues could come up and speak, and we would have a little less crowded meeting. And then, a meeting in four weeks where you could consider all of the documents provided by staff, all the new information that you have, and all the testimony that you're going to get from the public. So that's my thoughts on moving it forward, and I certainly hope when you do begin considering it, you do it section by section. Thank you so very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amber Wilson, President and CEO for the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, I'm here to present up-to-date data collected from the survey the chamber rolled out to membership and community members May 16th after the budget workshop, where council decided via split 3-2 vote to move forward with the cut-heavy budget without potential income from a 1% sales tax increase. I believe that you received copies of the survey. There are also copies on the back table for those in the audience that want to look at it. We had 723 responses that were collected. To recap, for those of you that aren't familiar with the survey, question one is, "Are you in support of adding a 1% sales tax increase measure to the November 2019 ballot?" 550 respondents equalling 76% responded yes. 173 respondents equalling 24% responded no. Question two was a, check the answer that applies. 434 respondents, 60%, checked that they would support a general 1% sales tax increase measure, which is subject to a majority vote approval. 149 respondents, 20%, checked that they support a special 1% sales tax increase, which is subject to a 2/3 vote approval. 168 respondents, equalling 24%, checked that they do not support a 1% sales tax increase either way. And 15 respondents, 2%, checked that they were not sure. Like I said, survey responses are in the back, if you'd like to see that graph. It's going to be open throughout budget discussion, so it'll probably close the 24th, I would imagine. Links can be found on the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce Facebook page, various Lompoc record, KC away and KSBY articles, or by contacting the chamber. I can email you a link if you're interested in taking that survey. Albert Einstein once said, "A leader is one who, out of clutter, brings simplicity, out of discord, harmony, and out of difficulty, opportunity." Now, I'm not sure about simplicity or harmony. But I urge council to see the opportunity out of the difficulty. Increased sales tax equals increased revenue, which equal a stronger and more vibrant community. Thank you.
Brandon Bridge, resident. I'd also like to urge the council, if possible, to move agenda item up, or as John, Mr. Lynn said, back further, so we can further regurgitate the information that's come in most recently. Also, just to benefit the large number of youth here, they certainly won't be able to make it to the end of the night, and I think to benefit the act of democracy, I think that would be the fair and empathetic thing to do for the community tonight. And the quicker we can resolve to that point, I think it would benefit everybody tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, there is no clapping or cheering. Again, no demonstration of favor or no favor.
Good evening. My name is Amber, and I'm the owner of the beach. I'm a homegrown Lompoc girl. Before I started the journey with the beach, I wore many hats and name tags. One of them was bartending, where there was live music for 21 and older. When I was building the beach, one of my highest priorities was to bring music, but for all ages and all walks of life. A place where you can bring your family, which I've executed. Oftentimes, the beach, beaches, the beach is a place where parents can come and watch their kids perform and play music. This is thanks to Randall and the amazing crew at Certain Sparks. I asked the council to redirect their priorities. Let us, the beach, tasting rooms, coffee shops, and our music store keep bringing music and art to our city of flowers. Let our generation and the ones after us provide a place for music, art, and fun. Please support us when we try to invest and enrich this community. My roots run deep in this beautiful city of flowers and art. Help us by not tying our hands when we're trying to make better musical place first for our children upcoming. Let us dance, spread love, smiles, and music to this town I love and care so deeply about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Mayor, City Council. I'm Brian Cole, now a 28-year resident. I started something a little while ago with Holland Byron's Music Store in 2009, and Certain Sparks has done an excellent job of taking over and has established a foundation to help kids with music training and so forth. And you're going to hear a lot in that regard, in terms of creating a vibrant musical community that is supported physically by the city, a little better than I have seen. And even today, I just want to speak on going online and seeing DiscoverBulton.com, and you go to their entertainment section, and they plainly show Standing Sun Live Music. It's a beer and wine-only place. It's right on Avenue of the Flags, but it's so easy to get on their webpage. Now, Bulton has a population of 4,552. Now we jump to Lompoc, 43,542, a little more, a little less, probably, and you go on And you go on, whether it's Chamber of Commerce site or whether you go on the other one, which is a little bit better, which is Explore Lompoke, there's really not really mention of music on there in terms of a thing, a draw to the community. Are we not proud of our musical community here? We have a strong musical community. It's, it's pretty obvious. I mean, we can bat around the appropriateness or not of playing in a particular winery. But let's show support for the people that want to play in those places and the people who will come out of town, into town to see that entertainment and not just see the art, but to also come around and have a glass of wine and just peacefully listen to some great music. And we do have some good musicians in this town. I can't emphasize that enough. And I think everybody kind of knows that. It's like a not spoken about enough secret of this town. That a lot of kids who are learning now have risen above and they are performing now. So that's all I just want to say about that is I just want to encourage, whether it's about money or about culture, I would take culture over that any day to just have that in our community as a stronger component to draw people, but also for our own, our own people that we live here. That's part of our life, part of my life especially, has been all my life. So I'm a little biased, yes. But just look at other communities to see how they are handling things. It's a simple thing to do and anybody can do it. So you don't have to reinvent the wheel. And I really appreciate, I really appreciate your listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, mayor and city council members. My name is Emily Wilson and I have had the privilege to grow up in the beautiful city of arts and flowers and now wine country, Lompoke. Both of my parents are employed as artists and are active members of this community. My mother, Michelle Castile, works at Inkling's, a local printing company, and has served on local communities with the Chamber of Commerce, including being a chair member of Brushes in Blues, where I was in charge of the children activities as a young teen. And my mom was chairperson of music entertainment. I also noticed as I walked up, and I invite you to check out the statue in the front, that was done by my grandfather, Noble Castile. So please check that statue out. That, this is where I grew up. This is my community. And I'm sad to say that we're moving in 10 or 11 days. We actually postponed our move. We're moving to Albuquerque. And we postponed our move so that my son could perform in a recital. That has now been indefinitely postponed. Our community is made unique and precious by our wealth of artists, musicians, and small business owners. I'm here to tell you today my deep disappointment in your petty enforcement of arbitrary permits and supposed safety concerns, which are impeding my son from performing in his music recital this year at the Wine Factory. This absolute unsupportive, cold, heartless implementation of policy disturbs me. As a teacher of 14 years in this community, I have taught at-risk students. And I'm keenly aware of the need to engage youth in meaningful activities that allow for self-expression and worthy contribution. In my educated opinion, Certain Sparks Music and their employees embody this lofty and difficult task. I don't know if I have enough time to tell you, but my son, Orin, has, was diagnosed three years ago with autism spectrum disorder. And as parents, we sought everything possible as far as services. And the best service that money could buy were music lessons. And he is an amazing drummer and he'd like to speak to you tonight.
I'm disappointed that I'm moving to Albuquerque, New Mexico, and in 10 or 11 days, when I was going to get to do this recital and I practiced six months maybe on this song. And it was going to help me. Our drumming really helps me because of my disorder. And all those other activities like skating. And it helps because it helps get all the negative energy out of me.
Thank you.
Certainly hard to top that. Mayor Osborne, city council members and staff, thank you for taking the time to listen to our community tonight. I am all of these things, a mother, wife, daughter, and sister. Since I can remember, music has been a part of my everyday life. I am not a Lompoke native, but when my husband and I moved here seven plus years ago, I immediately became invested in this small town. I am from the music capital of America, Austin, Texas, and I have seen how music makes the greatest of impacts on communities. My parents were in bands most of our childhood and my sister and I were involved in orchestra and choir throughout our school years. We moved around quite a bit, but the one thing that kept us together as a family, even when things were at their worst, was music. Music is the one thing that binds us all together. There's not a single person in this room that can say that music hasn't touched their lives in some way, even in the slightest, that song that comes on the radio in your car, at your doctor's office, at the gas station. It can make time stand still. Even at our Lompoke Flower Festival, music is the headline. Music is what brings us together. I am also in the wine business. Since I entered the wine world in 2012, I have witnessed firsthand how hard wineries and tasting rooms have fought for basic privileges like music, fundraisers, and other functions. When you take away those privileges, people will take their business elsewhere. I have never lived somewhere where people have to fight so hard to either open new businesses or even improve on an existing one. Why does Lompoke want to hold people down? Why don't you want to see the community grow and thrive? Lompoke is no longer the city of arts and flowers. It is the city of sorry, you can't do that. Every day I hear people saying they want to leave Lompoke because they don't see an end to this in sight. No resolution, nothing. If the city continues to deny requests to grow businesses, to host functions, there isn't going to be much of a city left. I am not asking for the city to fix everything today. I am asking for all of you to see through the politics and give the community what they deserve. Is there somewhere else you would prefer to do these types of functions and why, please? It would be nice to understand why applications such as these would be denied. And I'm talking about the Certain Sparks thing. What can we do as a community to mitigate any concerns to the city in the future? I would also like the council to give the exact reason why this particular function at the Lompoke Factory, Lompoke Wine Factory was denied, for the record. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Again, I must ask you not to clap. You may wave your hands, but again, no clapping. I thought it was honoring a child who was very brave. I would appreciate you not talking out of turn.
My name's Brett Wetzke. I am a Lompoke citizen. Thank you, council members and general for letting us have this opportunity to speak publicly about the Certain Sparks fiasco. I feel for that, that young kid drummer. As a local musician myself, it's, it's what keeps me out of trouble. I've got a young boy who is absolutely enthralled with music right now. And I would like to have a space like Randall does to where my son can thrive and be safe and get recognized for musical talents of everybody in the city. I would like to see some changes to some of the permit processes for temporary use. So it is not so hard to get done. There's no reason under the sun why a recital for children succeeding in music in a public space should be denied. No reason anywhere. So I would implore you guys to take a look at your policy, make some changes to make it easier for our kids, our businesses, our hopes, our talents to be recognized and appreciated without having to have city council or, or city hall meetings to get it done. This really hit, hit a, hit a sore spot for me because as a local musician, it's really, 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 really hard to get venues to, to take you specifically for these reasons. I mean, what goes better with wine and food than music? You know, this, this is a huge, huge opportunity for the city to get out of the doldrums where we're at right now because businesses are not thriving because of all of these policies that get overlooked and, and, and not moved on in the appropriate way. I spoke to Randall earlier out front to get a little bit more information on what had happened and why. And I, I still don't see a reason why it, it got passed down. So I'd like to join my wife with asking for the record why this got denied, why it got delayed, and why these kids aren't having a recital. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Hello, Gary Holsey, resident. I've been working with the building department now for quite some time. Trying to get a project approved here. And ran into a lot of resistance and I can't understand why. There's a existing footing design that has been on the Lompoke building website for many, many years, of which I've utilized before, back in 2003. When I designed this duplex, it was designed particularly for this footing design. And I submit, resubmit, I went to a DRB meeting in 2003 where this very issue came up. And I need to go pull the minutes from that meeting, which I haven't been able to do yet. And I'd like to add that to this. But I went in yesterday to the building department again to try to remedy this. And I found out that somebody has pulled the footing design off of the website. I have several copies of it from past. And the duplex that I submitted back in 2016 in August included that footing design. And we've been through several building officials in the last few years. And I've been, originally when I started this project, I went in and sat down with the building department and was told, yes, that this footing design was still allowable. And I recently, I updated my plans and submitted them. And during the time that I had gone into the city building department and talked to them, the, there was another company that became hired after that to do plan checks was called JAS. And they, they submitted back with correction disregarding the footing design. So I went to the building department and at that time there was a man named Chuck that was temporarily there. And well, he didn't want to make a decision on it, so things got delayed. And the city had eventually hired a Rafael Canejo. And he's, he told me that, yes, I could use the design, but he wanted me to go get a letter from the soils engineer stating what I was telling him true about the lot. And I did, and I brought it back to him. And he was trying to pass the buck to somebody else within the building department. He didn't want to make a decision on it. So during all this time, I've been back and forth with the building department. And there was a, a building official that was hired that was brought in, who, when I found out that he was in, I went in and talked to him and he said, yes, you're right. And so he was approving it with one condition, which I was willing to do. And so I geared up to get that done. And by the time I got back to the city building department, they had gotten rid of him. And they hired another man and that's the guy that's currently in there now. And I've talked to him a couple of times on this. In fact, I have notes from him dating back to a year ago.
I need you to wrap this up. You're going past your three minutes.
Yeah. So right now, anyway, yesterday I went to the city and asked for some appeals paperwork. And they said they didn't have any, they didn't have appeals board or anything. And I'm like, okay, well, I don't know what to do. And I, I've been batting my head against wall. I was here about a month and a half ago with the same issue. And I was told that somebody from the city council was going to get ahold of me and nobody ever did. So here I am again. And I have six copies of my request now that I'd like to give you and pass it down. And let's see if we can get this worked out. I don't know what the next step for me to do is, but here I am.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for letting me cut in line. I've got to get back to more music lessons at the shop. My name is Randall Senna. I own Certain Sparks Music and I just wanted to thank everyone for their beautiful words. It was very touching. I wanted to say quickly that the issues that people are sharing tonight, let me start from the beginning. One of the reasons that I'm fighting for so hard for this is not just for my own business and for my own students, but because I hear this kind of thing from countless businesses and countless people in the community all day long. I'm right down on H Street, so all day long people come in and they tell me. Today, a student of mine sat down and I shared what we've been going through. And he said to me, I've been waiting three years to get my electrical approved in this rental that I have on my property. And I turned in the paperwork over and over again. They kept saying it couldn't be done. I kept saying, everything's lined up, it should be working, I should have what I need. Finally, after three years, it was approved to have someone come and take a look at the electrical. And he said, yesterday, someone came to take a look at the electrical. They walked in, they said, where's your paperwork? He said, there it is, they signed it and they left. Nothing was looked at, three years of, so these are the problems that we're describing. It's not just myself. I like to play guitar. If you ask me what makes me happy, it's sitting around playing guitar by myself. I'm here because I have been blessed with the respect of this community. And I feel like it's my duty to continue this fight for these issues, not just for the permit, for this recital. But why does this keep happening over and over again? Now, that's a big question that we can't solve in this meeting or probably a lot of other meetings. But the community has spoken, they want some sort of progress. This issue is so simple that they wonder if this can't be done, then how are these other things going to get done? That's why there's tears in the eyes of these people. So I just wanted to say thank you so much, everyone, for coming out. I don't know how much faith I have in the system at this point, but I do know that I'm not going to stop doing what I'm doing because it's, I believe, some sort of duty that I've been given in my lifetime. And so I'm going to keep doing what I'm doing. Thank you guys very much. And I'll let Caitlin Chewie, our flower festival queen, finish up. I've got to get to another lesson. Thank you.
Thank you, Randall.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne and Lompoke City Council. My name is Caitlin Chewie and I'm a longtime resident of Lompoke, a graduate of Carrillo High School and the current flower festival queen. I'm currently at Pepperdine studying for music as my major. And part of my platform for running for flower festival queen was to use music to unite my community. I started taking lessons with Randall, guitar lessons at Certain Sparks, about five years ago in order to develop my musicianship. An unintended consequence of all those lessons was an encouragement from the music community of Certain Sparks to get out into the community and sing and play with my own family band. It was because of the efforts of Certain Sparks Music and the voice teachers in Lompoke that I was able to provide music not only as a paid musician, but also as a volunteer and an ambassador to the community. My journey and my ability to share music with the community is a direct result of my upbringing in a community that values music and the spirit of giving. There are many residents in Lompoke who believe that the fostering of music and the arts is a way to strengthen our community and enrich the lives of everyone, from our children to our elders. I speak on behalf of the people tonight and I urge the officials of Lompoke City to take action to help music and arts to flourish. I'm asking you for your help to find a way to make it easy for the youth of our community to have the same opportunities that I had. Music is a gift that brings my community together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. My name is Augusto Caldejo. I'm the chef and owner of Scratch Kitchen and Wine Bar in Lompoke, California. Had the pleasure of to operate my business here in Lompoke for the last four years. This is the best city that I've ever been a part of. I truly love it and love all of its citizens. Now, I felt compelled to come here. I feel very passionate about this city. It wasn't an easy road for me to start my business here. There was nobody that I could come to the city and give me direction of what to do. I had to fight every single way to get every permit signed, to get anything done, to get this business open. I now employ 20 people, all of them live here in Lompoc. Two of them have been able to buy their homes through the job that I provide. The wineries are a vital part of my business. They do events, they have music, they hire me. I'm able to cater, I'm able to bring food, I'm able to hire people to continue to get them employed. Music is a very important part of this, and the pickup parties, music, it all goes together. I'm able to continue to employ people and bring what I do, which is my passion, to the people here of Lompoc. I care so much about this community, and I know that you guys care about it, too. I'm very concerned about the obstructionist mentality that the city has gotten wrapped up. Where does this obstruction come from? I've been able to try to build a shed. I'm just putting dirty napkins in there. I can't get an approval. I sympathize with the guy. I'm sorry. Why can't we just have events? I go to Bealton, I go to Los Olivos, I go to San Inés. There's women in $4,000 purses going to a porta potty in Los Olivos because the city has been able to come up with solutions and not obstruction. We want more people to come to our city to continue to keep me in business, Steve in business, all of the other people in business, to be able to pay our taxes, continue to thrive in our community, continue to hire people. But my faith in our city is dwindling because wineries are moving to other places. In the past year, we've lost several properties in the wine ghetto because they cannot operate. There's too much obstruction. This isn't an issue about square footage or bathrooms for square footage. This is about an obstructionist mindset. Why can't we say yes to things? Why can't we find a common solution? Where do the obstructions come from? City manager, mayor, city employers? Each of you council members? Where does it come from? Can we go ahead and come to consensus and how to have a very cohesive way to move our city forward and invite people to come here and visit us and take advantage of all the things we have to offer? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Anne Mujee. I'm a past council member and also a past member for six years of the Planning Commission. And since 10, 15 years ago, the word has been, we want to be business friendly. This doesn't sound very friendly to me. And part of it, I think, has to do with cutting staff. You need staff people to read plans quickly, and you need experienced people, and you continue, some of you have, can cut the planning department. So it really doesn't figure, one way or the other, why you're having, why these lovely people are having all these problems when you keep cutting staff who can't, don't have all the time or the knowledge to read the plans and so on. It seems so obvious, and we, you've been, we all have been talking about, we've got to be business friendly for small businesses. This has totally put a block in several small businesses in this town. And I don't, I wasn't going to talk about this at all. Guess what? I was going to talk about the budget, but this has to do with the budget a little bit, and it also has to do with training staff and making sure that these people get help. And the Planning Commission, there's a couple of members of the Planning Commission on here right now, and they need to pay attention to what's going on because this is just a disaster. Back in the day, one of Michelle's daughter mentioned she worked on Brushes &amp; Blues. I was chair of that for many years. And we did have art and music up at the mission, and then we moved to Ken Adam Park, and we did have music and wine, and artists came and showed their work, and it was a great, great, great event. But I don't know if we could put it on now. Doesn't sound like it's too business friendly or event friendly, and that's what's going to bring money into this town. It just, it's so plain, and I'm sure it must be plain to you, too. So please, please help these people.
Thank you. I will recognize that several council members have turned their light on, but we are still in public comment period, and as soon as we're completed, I will call on you as we finish them.
Steve Erwood, resident of Lompoc. I wasn't planning to speak, but the building department issue that the gentleman brought up is you could bring 1,000 people here and tell a story as sad or sadder than that. And so a lot of people say the city, the city, the city. Well, there is no city. I mean, we can't get everyone in one pile and say, we are the city. The city's made up of a bunch of people, and the root of the cause is the building department. I've been here. I got here in 2012, put a permit in, and I've seen 25 building officials, okay? No, the other root of the cause is that the leadership of the city, the manager and the city council have chosen or never heard that there is terrible stuff going on in the building department. It's mismanaged, and it's partly the way that we hire these people. We hire people, we hire outside plan checkers. Guess what a plan checker, outside plan checker is motivated to do? Kick back plans 100 times so that they can bill $20,000 to that place, okay? An internal person is going to be more reasonable. So structurally, the building department is set up to screw the people because they're going to be billing us, okay? So I suggest there be a deep dive. I suggest the building, the city manager dive into it, and we could have a special meeting here about the ridiculousness of every building project that we've seen in Lompoc. Compared to the other cities, it's completely ridiculous, and we're all, we're all put up against a timeframe that if we want to go fight it, we could get some reasonable outcome in a year and a half. Nobody building anything has a year and a half. So really, this, it's, I don't know anything about the recital, but it sounds like it was a building department issue, not a planning issue, probably. Planning's not perfect, but building is the one that causes the most of the problems, okay? It was my two cents worth. I really do think that if you got a lot of the architects and the contractors who are high-integrity professional people in here and talk about this, non-attribution, okay? Because if I was building a thing right now, I wouldn't be talking about this because they would come over there and be very bad to me as I go through the process, okay? I'm through the process, so I could say it.
Thank you.
Council members, my name is Sean Cosby. I'm 20 years old. I'm a long time, lifetime, I should say, resident of Lompoc, California. I recently graduated with my Associate's of Art in Music from Allen Hancock College. I've been playing music since I was about eight years old, and I truthfully wouldn't be about in this position where I'm at now without Certain Sparks Music. I could say that, coming from a troubled past as well. I, as well as the kid before, at a young age, was diagnosed with autism, and I've dealt with a lot of issues in my day. I can't believe I'm doing this, actually. But I think without music, I wouldn't want to imagine where I could have been mentally, physically. I could have been dead, but without, you know, music was there for me, always. And a big part, huge part of musical enrichment and expansion in the education of music is recitals. Nothing is more, more, what's the word, fulfilling, satisfactory than being able to go up on stage for the first time and be able to get a nice big round of applause for doing the craziest work you possibly could have done. I mean, maybe it's your first time playing the instrument, and you're playing something really sweet, one finger, or maybe you learned how to play Stay Away to Heaven. Regardless, no matter what, the satisfaction in the end is the best part. And truthfully speaking, I think there's a lot of children in this town that truthfully need something like that because in reality, we don't have too much here that isn't worth, or should I say, you've got to pay for a lot here. You can go to Mi Amore, yeah, you can go to the bike park, but really, besides that, there's not too much to do. What I mean, and would you rather have your kids be playing Fortnite all day long? I really don't want that. That's a good one, huh? But in general, music enrichment in youth as well as in elderly, or just anywhere you are, from ages zero to 99, or even more than that, music is such an important part of, of not just personal people's lives, but I think to humanity as a whole here. We're all vibing to the same sound, so please, 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 please think about not just the kids, because we also have a lot of adults who are entering this recital as well, but think of just how many lives are being changed by this beautiful piece of art, beautiful piece of art, that we can all share and love together, which is music. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I could not help to listen to the enthusiasm of these beautiful musicians came here, poured their heart out. I believe music is the food for our soul, nourishment of souls, gentleness, and all this good quality that I call it heavenly quality comes from art and music. We should not underestimate it. We should put value on what they presented and help them to promote music for, music and art for the city of Lompoc.
Thank you, Mr. Spahn. I'm sorry, you've already actually had your three minutes.
One more?
With this go around so that we respect people's time for the evening. You may come back on another topic in the agenda later on.
That's a different topic now, but it's fine.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say I, hello to the council and mayor. My name is Amanda Griffith, and I go to Certain Sparks, and I moved here four years ago, and I know that they have a special relationship with the Lompoc Wine Company, and it's serving the adults and the students that are children. And also, I would like to say that I've been really sad to see businesses closing. As a four-year resident of Lompoc, it's really sad to see stores, restaurants, and to now hear that wineries and people trying to build housing complexes are being denied ability to do things easily. So I was just going to say that I would think that, you know, when we put ourselves forward in December to have a recital and then to find out one week before the recital is going to take place, it's disappointing to the children and the adults and the businesses that have, you know, poured their time and money into this and really just getting, I guess what everybody's saying is it's just the runaround, you know, not really honestly addressing this to be expedient and to move smoothly and to have a city that runs efficiently. So thank you.
Thank you. If you're going to speak, please go ahead and move forward.
Hello, public servants, elected officials. My name's Justin Charbonneau. I'm a business owner here in Lompoc. I'm in the wine industry. I'm also a musician, so this issue definitely affects me. While I don't have a tasting room right now, going forward, I hope to expand my business and keep a thriving business here in Lompoc, but, you know, I'm definitely a little bit worried about that going forward. I was, I'm a Lompoc native, moved here when I was five years old, so I'm about as local as local can be. I've known Randall Senna for a good 20 years. He's an upstanding individual. I don't know why his foundation's having such a problem getting a recital going, and for the record, I would, I would probably vote for him for any public office that he ran for. I just hope that the city and whoever else is in charge sees that, the fact that we see how difficult it is to get things going and to have our businesses run and be successful and generate money for the coffers, I hope that you guys can see that that might discourage other people from doing what we need to do to have a good business, have a good economic community. Yeah, I just hope we can get this resolved, and running a business in Lompoc can be easier because we want to have those dollars, those tourist dollars. This is Lompoc, California, gateway to the Santa Rita Hills, even though Bealton's kind of taken up that mantle already. But, yeah, I just want us all to be able to figure it out and have us all thrive and prosper. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Howdy, y'all. My name is Jacob Cole. I'm a Lompoc resident, and we've heard a lot of good reasons as to why we should not obstruct the industries in which art and music can flourish. It's not enough to call yourself the city of arts and flowers and yet be knowingly, or worse, unknowingly hinder the forward motion, which is not only the lifeblood of a healthy community, but also the best hope that kids in our area have at acquiring a grounded foundation that can better ready them for the real world. I've been an educator for over 10 years, and it is through my work in helping kids to understand music that I have witnessed firsthand the benefits of having a vibrant music scene that embraces the youth and gives people of all ages and backgrounds a place to grow and learn. Archaic biases, proceedings, and regulation do nothing but choke that lifeblood of our precious little community. I understand that there are people here who don't want change and don't understand this change, but just because you don't understand something doesn't mean it's wrong, nor a detriment to your way of life. And I also hate to say it, too, but this change is coming whether you like it or not. You have a unique chance to embrace this and capitalize on this, or you can simply pretend it's not happening and let the world pass our city by, as it seems some folks would prefer. I urge you to think, to think on this updated revision of code, to think on these new ordinances. And though I don't care if people are too tired of working on this project because it's no excuse, copying out is what leads to more dire problems. You can binge your Netflix shows later. For now, do the job we elected you to do, put the people truly first in our community and its future truly ahead of personal gain and personal issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Susan Gallagher, resident of Lompoc. I want to bring a point up tonight, and I've asked this question to a lot of people in town, and I ask you, what is the other name for H Street? It's Pacific Coast Highway. We don't advertise it. People get off the plane to LA or San Francisco, and then are dry PCH, and they're coming through our town, and our town doesn't look good. Please, let's get cleaned up, city of Lompoc.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we will close public comment, and before I bring it back to council, just a reminder that this is public comment. None of these items are agendized, and we need to not have a discussion. Councilmember Starbuck.
Recognizing it's not on the agenda, and we aren't going to have a discussion on it, but could we get some kind of a briefing on what is going on with this?
I'm sorry, there is no outburst. If you wanted to ask that question, you should have come to the microphone.
I can ask our community development director to come over and give a quick update, but the problem is if you go too long, then it becomes a Brown Act issue, so I don't want to go, what I'd suggest doing, I think, excuse me, city attorney and I talked about it, is if you want, we can agendize for the next meeting and have a much longer in-depth discussion about it, but I think if you go too far, then...
Do you need three to do that?
Yes.
Under council request?
It can be done at any time during the meeting. You can make the request.
I'd like to make the request now, then.
Councilmember Mosby.
I'd second that.
And I will give it its third.
So we'll schedule that for the July 2nd.
Second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Councilmember Mosby.
Maybe the city manager, we could revert back to the city manager's report and give a just a brief analytics about the TUP process. It might be... It might be, without making a level of discussion, but just like who's in charge and, and something about it real fast.
Well, and the typical TUP goes through the planning department to look at what the event is, where it is, does it fit, does the area that's proposed, is a, is a wedding going to be, if it's a wedding, somewhere that is proper, it's not gonna be too busy of an area. So it goes through looking at the zoning of it. A lot of this is delving into more than just your typical TUP, because it is an older building that we've been talking about, so it, it reached into fire and safety, other issues like that, that really grew from where it was. So it's, it's much different than your normal TUP. That, that's why it's been taking so long.
Thank you for that. All right. We have appointments. Item number six is council appointments to Parks and Recreation Commission. We have one appointee for councilmember Starbuck that is through twelve, twenty twenty-two, and one appointment for councilmember Cordova through twelve, twenty twenty. We have two applicants, Brandon Bridge and Jose Salas. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Brandon Bridge based on the thorough, complete job on his application, but I do recognize the name and the effort to bring it down here, so I would like to nominate you to the Parks and Rec Commission, Mr. Bridge.
So we have a motion, and we need a second before we open the floor to discussion.
I'd give a second.
And we have a second. Any, any discussion? Councilmember Cordova.
I just have a question. When an applicant for any commission or board submits their application, is there a written requirement for the application to be filled in, to be fully completed? Or do we just accept names and two yeses and a signature?
There's actually not even a requirement to have an application submitted by an applicant.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
So, we would request that they fill out the information and submit an application, but it's not actually required.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded, questions answered, any other discussion? Let's vote. And that passes five-zero. Councilmember Cordova, there is a position still open.
Sorry, wrong buttons. Okay, yes, I would like to motion the application for Jose Salas to serve on the Parks and Rec Commission.
I will give you your second on that. Any additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. Number seven is the public hearing regarding nuisance, abatement of weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt, adoption of resolution number sixty-two, sixty-one, parentheses nineteen, and we will have our battalion chief, Fire Marshal Dina Paschke for the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, and the community, Dina Paschke. This is our second round for the weed abatement, so we have had a couple letters go out. We're still working with several of our partners. They've asked for a week extension, and we do work with anyone that asks that has maybe a situation that's come up, maybe sometimes it's hard to get a contractor. So we're at a point where we do need to declare a public nuisance so we can abate big, large parcels. I will give the background that last year, we only had one large parcel that was over near the hospital that we did have to do a forced abatement. So with that, there is a, a teeter program that would go against property taxes. We try and avoid that at all costs, because usually that's a breakdown of communication or there's very difficult circumstances. So it's much easier for all parties to agree on what the scope of work is and to work forward. So with that, we do have a list that is a little bit longer this year than normally comes for the second letter. That's only because we've had such exorbitant rains late in May. We had different climatic situations, and we're still working with some partners. So I anticipate really only one, two parcels, because we do have another person that we cannot find the owner, because they've since passed away and there are no heirs. So I wanna be very transparent, there'll probably be two that will be forced, but that's all I anticipate at this point. We have to kind of help people know that there is a deadline, and sometimes that deadline, when it's kind of right in front of them, pushes them along, and we are generally pretty successful with that, not having to incur any of the extra costs, because we wanna avoid that for the city and, and for the customer, so we don't have to pay for any additional admin fees or anything like that. So I am available for any questions if staff has.
Does council have any questions? Councilmember Cordova.
I just have one question, Dina. On the fiscal impact, it stated that costs related to the annual weed and debris abatement program that are not ultimately charged to the property owner as a lien or reimbursed by the property owner, how, if, if the understanding is, is that there is a lien and that you, how do you, has this ever happened where you don't get the cost recovery to be able to, to do the work?
So we have one that it's going through the foreclosure process, so we have an outstanding bill. It becomes a lien, and it has to clear title before they could get rid of the property. So that one is taking a little bit. We do have a budget that covers that, in the instance that we wind up into one of these slight roadblocks, but they cannot sell this large parcel until that, in time that lien is paid. So to clear the title, they'll need to do so.
Seeing no other questions for you, Fire Marshal, we will now open it to public comment. Seeing no one rise for public comment, we will close that and bring it back to council. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move staff recommendations.
Councilmember Cordova?
I will second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. All right. Item number eight is the continuation of hearing for the former property owner's appeal of ruling on requests for reconsideration of the utility director's enforcement of Lompoc Municipal Code, section thirteen, point sixteen, point zero-four-zero, connection to public sewer required at two zero nine West Pine Street, the sewer lateral service protest. Councilmember Mosby?
Yeah, I gotta step out of my own property within five hundred feet.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkie.
Mayor, council, this is a continuation of an item that originally came to you two meetings ago, and the former owner is here to address any of the concerns that were brought up when the item was continued last week, last meeting, so.
Okay. Does council have questions for the applicant? Councilmember Cordova.
Well, I actually have a question for Mr. Wilkie.
Okay.
So I was the council member that kind of asked for this to come back, just because we were on a split vote, and I wanted to get a little more information, but what would be, what, and I know that it was stated on the last packet that was given to us on the staff report, but what would be the cost again, if you could state, for the actual line to be put in as the requirement per the city on Pine Avenue? What was the cost of it?
Well, we don't have a estimate for that, so it's really kind of a guess, but for the purposes of the valuation, I believe a number of thirty thousand dollars was floated around if it was done by the applicant. Unfortunately, the city has requirements where we have to pay prevailing wages for public works jobs, so that thirty thousand dollars that would be done by a private entity, we wouldn't be able to do it for that much. Our cost would be higher than that, which is, I think, in the staff report, I said it would probably be, might be in the range of sixty thousand dollars, but it's, it's a really, it's a, without any kind of engineering plans or design work, there's really, those, those two numbers are, they might be in the ballpark, but they, there could be a range of ten or fifteen thousand dollars on either side of it, on either one, for the privately-created infrastructure or the publicly-created infrastructure.
Okay. And I, I had another question. When the lot was sold, I believe it was in December or in January, at the end of the year, or the beginning of this year.
Yeah.
Was, was the requirement at that time, when the property was sold, was it notified to city and staff that the property had been sold and we now had this particular requirement that would go into effect, or how did that come about?
Well, actually, the applicant had come in and started talking with city staff, several different departments, I believe, planning, possibly, I know, engineering, public works, to try to find a way to come to some other arrangement other than what was agreed to in the covenant that was recorded on the property, and that occurred well before December. I don't, since I wasn't in that area, I don't know exactly when he started coming in and asking questions and trying to take care of this before the sale, but it was well before that actual sale that occurred. I don't think I actually got a notice from, and I don't think I would have gotten a notice from the title company that said it was actually sold, but we did, I think, hear through the grapevine that it, it had been sold, I think, probably at the time that the applicant for the new property in the front brought in their request to do some tenant improvements, so.
So when a requirement such as that or that type of agreement takes place between the city and a, and an owner of a property, is it typical for the agreement not to be recorded through escrow, or is it typical that it should have been recorded through escrow and you should have been notified? Although I do acknowledge the fact that Mr. Sabani was the owner of...
Well, it was recorded through, it was recorded at the time that it was signed back in, I believe, somewhere in two thousand sixteen.
Okay, and it was recorded through escrow?
It was recorded, I don't think there was any sale involved at that point in time, because it was, the property, the two properties were still owned by Mr. Sabani, his trust.
Okay.
So, because the actual split occurred in two thousand six, and I'm not entirely sure why the requirement wasn't done then, and I'm not, I don't know the background of why it was done in two thousand sixteen, ten years after the split, but it was recorded at that point in time without any kind of sale transaction. It was recorded against the property.
Okay.
The properties.
And the reason why I ask these questions is because, obviously, at the last meeting, we were at a stalemate, and in the spirit of compromise, I was trying to figure out if there was a way that we could maybe perhaps meet this issue halfway. I, I would recommend either, if parties agree, my recommendation would be that we potentially, since there is a, the back lot or the second lot, that perhaps the compromise be made that when that second lot actually does get sold, that at that time, then we, we, we enforce the, the addition or the requirement of the installation. I do think it needs to happen, and I personally think that it does need to happen at the Pine Street. I, I wasn't, I don't subscribe to the fact that not having or removing and having to do the work on Pine Street, that that's, that that's an issue. I don't think that's an issue. We did it on Barton, and it was just perfectly fine. The street worked perfectly fine after we got done doing it there. So I don't agree with that as a reason to not have it done. I think it needs to be done, and it needs to be done properly, and it needs to be done on Pine Street. So I don't know if that's something that the city or the, that the landowner would be willing to do at this time, otherwise I have a second alternative recommendation.
Okay. So I have one point to ask for clarification. You said at the time the back property is sold. What if the back property is rented to a long-term tenant? Is that, would that trigger, in your mind, a...
We could, because then, I, I would agree, I would agree to that, because then you have a use in that area that could change or that would add, obviously, to the, to the, to the use of that line, and that could trigger. So, I don't know if anybody else has it. Otherwise, I do have an alternative.
Councilmember Vega.
I'm not sure that I, I'd like some clarification on the, on the rental unit. I know you threw that in as a caveat there, if it was rented, but there wouldn't be a windfall to the, to the owner, monetary windfall to allow him to make that, that change just if it was rented, so maybe you could clarify that, okay?
Well, I was, it sounded to me like the suggestion was until the back building is used and is contributing to the sewer system, that there's no reason to impose this requirement, but I may have, I may have misinterpreted that.
Yeah, and I'd like probably a little clarity, and probably talking to the applicant might clarify that, Brad, so we could find out what his thought process would be on this too, so we could, in the essence of compromise, yeah, if Mr. Sabani could please come up and clarify through the mayor here, that I'd like to hear from him and see what his thought processes is, if he's planning on selling this property, or if he's gonna rent it, or what's going on here.
Mr. Sabani, if you would approach the podium and answer Councilmember Vega's questions. Thank you.
Honorable mayor, members of council, first of all, I'd like to apologize for missing the meeting last time. I wasn't aware that I was scheduled for the fourteenth. At the meeting, I understood I was scheduled for eighteen. Unfortunately, I missed that meeting. It was no excuse for me except that. So I thank the city attorney for informing me about it, and thank you for extending this into this meeting. There seems to be a little bit of confusion. I, I'd like to take a few minutes, just the engineering point of view, to describe to the, originally, I checked the history of the thing. The city of Lompoc had a sewer line at a shallower depth, that provided service for adjacent property, at the same time brought some of the sewer from the other part of the town, delivered it to the old wastewater treatment plant, which was closer to the city. When they built the new wastewater treatment plant, they designed a trunk line. This trunk line placed at a depth of fourteen feet. Now, this elevation, this point, is twelve feet, so twelve, twelve feet deeper than that. So they put the line way down in the dip that will be protected and will not be disturbed by anyone. That is the purpose of trunk line. We bought this property at two thousand five. This construction of this trunk line was done at two thousand twenty. Now, to me, city neglected to provide, if they put the sewer line at that dip, they should have provided for all the adjacent property, lateral, that they could access these laterals. If the city intended, they knew there were two buildings in this property. A good engineers would have designed that thing, that if they wanna comply with the ordinance that each property has separate lateral, they should have made that provision when they're putting this line at that dip. It would have cost two, three hundred dollars more when the trench is open. They should have put up a lateral, brought it to the property line here. This is it. That's what practice has been, and I have practiced myself in that thing. That's a prudent way of doing this thing. You do not put a main trunk line and eliminate the shallow line that was there before. They could have done two things. Either put up lateral, put up lateral for everyone, or left the old sewer line and say, hey, this is a local line, shallower dip, that you guys could connect into it. You know, eighteen years ago, city of Lompoc did not anticipate it will grow so fast and will property become valuable. So I feel city should take some responsibility for not providing adequately. Now, in two thousand six, I approached the city to split this land to two parcels. At that time, city engineer and official contacted me, and we talked about it before we go to the planning commission. Normally, when you submit a slot split or a subdivision, at that time, all the various departments of the city will make their comments for the future. One of the issue was here, providing two laterals, right? And I said at that time, I said, you want us to tear up this load and, and go put a sewer line? They said, no, you have a six-inch sewer line. Lateral is a four-inch line. This six-inch sewer line is adequate, that you... This six-inch sewer line is adequate, that you do more development in this one and a half acre parcel, and even if you build a condominium, that six-inch sewer line is adequate. And that was the reason they did not impose any requirement that we put new lateral. Then, in 2012, the Department of Agriculture, State Department of Agriculture approached us. They wanted the back building for Department of Agriculture, because it has plenty of parking, and they have 32 vehicles, all right? I did not have to go to the city, because State of California supersede the city. I did not have to get a, go to the city, get a permit, because when you have a state project, a DMV and so forth, you don't need to go to city, city, state inspect the program, I mean, inspect the building. But I felt always, state project, I always go to the city and ask them to review the project, because later on, this building would become the city project, building. So, I paid the fees, and I did that. Then during that time, the city came back and said, well, Morris, you have a two-inch water line serving both buildings. How do we get, collect our sewer fee for two buildings? Follow what I'm saying? Am I confusing yet? I talked to the city public works, I mean, superintendent, I mean, the director of utility, and he and I agreed that in the event I sell all of these lots, we created a covenant that I will separate the meters that the city collector sewer fee, because the city Lampok collector sewer fee based on the water consumption. So, so that's the history of what happened. Then, in December of last year, we sold the front building. At that time, I felt, well, I should fulfill that obligation. I went to the city and obtained permit. I paid the fees, and they gave me permit for one, that I'd replace the sewer line, I mean, the water line. So, we removed the two-inch line and put two one-inch line, and separate the line and service both building with separate water meter. Thus, city collect their sewer fee. So, we complied with it. Then, I approached the city and said, hey, we have done this thing. City was going to accept this sewer line, this six-inch lateral line, sewer line. If I give you an easement, will you accept it? They were not in the mood to accept it. They said, no, we don't want to accept any more responsibility. That's the way cities act now, that they are trying to relieve of all kind of responsibility that they, to be, that is their responsibility to maintain a sewer line, but they don't want to do it. Now, last meeting, I didn't know that. John Lynn came here and shared with you four or five other location that city has four-inch line they are maintaining here. Now, how could they discriminate against me, because I have a six-inch line? But anyway, that's not the issue. I really said, all right, I'll take care of that six-inch line. But to me, city created with their poor design, or not poor design, I should say, no concern for adjacent property, they put their sewer line at 14 feet deep, deeper than this wall, and then they expect me to go up there, comply with the ordinance. Good God, this ordinance should be revised, should be amended, if this is a hardship. This is a hardship. I'm not asking you to give me a gift. I'm not asking you to do me a favor. I've never asked, I've developed lots of property in the city. I take exception to what they said last time. They're giving me a gift. I don't expect a gift. I take exception to that very much, and I was insulted. All I'm saying, make up for what you didn't do at the time. As a hardship, you created a hardship. Even if I have to put a new sewer line or anything, my neighbor wants to do some line, you put the line way down deep, that's going to be, the cost is about $30,000, $40,000. It's not the cost of $30,000, $40,000. It's the waste of money to do something that is not necessary. A six-inch line is adequate. So, I ask you to please consider this in hardship case, and we have done everything. City has two water meter connect, oh, by the way, in December, in January of, in January of 16 last year, we went to the city and said, well, it's not worth it. Let me go ahead and do the third alternate. Build a cleanout at the city property line, and that last 39 feet is going to be a short distance city could maintain, if there is any maintenance requirement. And I was kind of, again, I was surprised that they brought up exaggerated, oh, my gosh, if this line back up, it's going to cost us million-dollar liability. Good God, the line is 12, 14 feet deep, the, exists, and my line is about my height. There's a drop, it's a, it's a four, nine-feet drop in 39 feet. There's no way that line could back up. So, I don't know. What is the reason cities wasting so much time to bring this thing up here? What they're trying to prove? They have done that other places. There are four or five lots, other location, and they're maintaining the sewer line. So, I feel this is a case of hardship, and create, city has created this hardship, and they should accept the line. I'm not saying the whole line, I'm just saying the last 39.
Mr. Sabani, if I could ask another question here. With common knowledge here of closing this escrow with that caveat of knowing that the sewer lines were going to have to be separated, or, I guess the question is, you closed escrow with common knowledge that this was an issue. Is this a promise to the new buyers or the two new owners? Or was this a requirement from the city that with common knowledge that you had?
No, the, when, we, we, we shared all the information. In fact, the escrow did not close. I want to make sure transparency is there. The church who was going to buy the property, we want to make sure their attorney, their people, they know about it. And I told them, in fact, there's an agreement, in case city doesn't accept, who maintain the line, how we do it. The six-inch line is a private line.
And just for clarity, if I could ask, you separated the water lines, you had meters separated, because the sewer charges are based on water usage?
Right.
But the requirement is that each building has its own lateral, is that correct?
Yes, that's the city's requirement, ordinance, that's required, city requirement there. But I've shared with you, when they did the subdivision, when they split, the lot split, this goes before the city planning commission as well as the city council. You look at this thing, I have a copy, no, what is that thing? Ed, would you bring the thing? I could show you the permit, the condition of approval. They said no comment. They did not require that we, they, they did not require that we put a separate line, because the six-inch line was adequate.
I guess to go along with what Councilman Cordova had requested and asked, your intended use for the back parcel, and you heard what she suggested.
I, I'm sorry, I kind of missed at the end of it.
Okay, I think she was suggesting that when the back parcel was, or is to be rented, or if you were to resell the property in the back, that possibly there would be a delay in triggering the requirement that the lateral be installed in the front building, and hopefully that I'm understanding correctly what she was, what she had said. But I was just wondering, or maybe she can clarify again, what her question was.
What, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize. I, I'm not clear what the question is. The sewer line, the six-inch sewer line goes to the back property, and it comes in the front and tag, and connect to the front property line.
Sure.
It's a six-inch line, not a four-inch lateral, and serve both property, in fact, has served the property for the past 50 years before I bought it. And it's a vetrified clay pipe. Vetrified clay pipe is the best pipe, as long as there's no tree roots, and in that area, there is no tree root within 500 feet of the building. So, the line has served without any maintenance or any, any trees. And besides, I'm not asking you to, I'm not asking the city to maintain that whole six-inch line. All I'm asking, the last 39, 25 feet.
Councilmember Vega, if you're willing to yield the floor, we can continue with the questions and circle back around to Councilmember Cordova.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'll just make a statement. I'm going to vote for this appeal for you, Mr. Sabani, but I'm going to just say that, you know, that line has been there for a long time. When it was built, the city approved it, it was good enough then, the use has not changed. It's become a lesser use. It used to be the telephone company, they washed trucks there, there was a retail store. The use is going to be less intensive. There is no line on Oak for him to tie into. That's why this line is six-inch and goes all the way from Oak all the way out to Pine. The simplest solution here is to make a little addendum in the Lampok Municipal Code that allows for these kind of circumstances to happen. It's common sense again. I mean, there's a right way, there's a wrong way, and it appears to be the Lampok way.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, in, in light of the discussion that is being had, my, my second recommendation would be if the city would approve, maybe perhaps assessing just a fee to Mr. Sabani, and then the city moving forward with doing the work that needs to be done, and that way, it, there was an agreement in place. I realize that Mr. Sabani is an engineer, and I think he's, he's very qualified to give us information about the, the line and how it works, and the fact that it is able to take in, as a six-inch lateral, it is able to take in the current use and probably any potential future use. So, I don't know if that's something that would be, again, in the spirit of compromise, and without any negativity, if that would be something that would be acceptable, you know, assessing a minimal fee that would allow us to move forward and allow Mr. Sabani to move forward with this.
I would need to default to our city attorney and, and department to determine what that fee might be, given we have such a huge range of actually implementing the necessary change.
So, my, my personal recommendation would be that the fee would be somewhere between $10,000 to $12,000, being that if he did the work, it would roughly cost him about $30,000. I think, there was, there was a number, and I'm, and I do apologize that I didn't bring the staff report with me, but there was a number, and I, or, or something that was said from the podium, and there was a number of around $30,000 that stuck in my head, and that's what I was thinking. Obviously, if the city does it, it's a little different, but again, that's, that would be my recommendation.
The, the actual report, which I do have in front of me, stated that the range for potential implement, cost of implementing the necessary line would be between $35,000 and $65,000.
Well, may I say something?
Yes, Mr. Sabani.
I've tried to share with you, this sewer line is there. If the city wants, I offered, the city, we will get some easement from the church. I do not own the property. Hopefully, I could get the, the church give me some easement. That's another issue. So, the sewer line is on the property that church owns. My property that I own is 204 Oak Avenue behind it. So, assuming the church grant us an easement, that we could put the sewer line, I offered that the city examine the line, or I could bring another plumber to examine the line, and see, you could upgrade the sewer line, and city accept the sewer line as a, as a sewer line for materials. I'm willing to do that. To me, that's a fair way of doing it. But I do not want to pay some fee to the city, and still I'm maintaining the line. What is the reason I should pay the city a fee if I'm going to maintain the line? Now, this is not fair. First of all, city has created this hardship. They removed the old shallow line from Pine Avenue, or they, I don't know what they did with it, but they, they deprived us of use of a sewer line. On the Pine Avenue, on the Oak Avenue, they did not have any sewer line. That's very unusual. Now, on Pine Avenue, there was one that was a shallow line that we could have used, but they eliminated that in favor of their own truck line. The city installed a line to serve the sewer, the truck line to collect all the sewage from the various parts of the town and take it to the wastewater treatment. So, I didn't cause that. I shouldn't be responsible for what they deprived me for this thing. They left a hardship for me. And now, to me, that's not fair for me to pay them $5,000 or $10,000, and this number coming in flying from everywhere, $60,000, $30,000. Now, if the city wants to use their own crew, I will, I'd be willing to pay for the materials.
Can I ask one more?
That would be a more compromised feeling.
Councilmember Cordova.
Mr. Sabani, but when you bought the, the, the whole building and the lot that was there, it was one lot, correct?
Yes.
So, you requested the lot split?
I requested a lot, yes. Thank you. But at that time, the city discussed this thing, and they said the six-inch line is adequate, and they were willing to accept it. The reason I didn't go along with it, because if I'd accepted it, then I had to pay two sewer line sewer fee for two empty building. And see, I didn't pay $200, $300 a month for, that would have added up quite a bit. So, there was no need to. So, we decided to wait and, but, but the, but the planning commission and the staff at that time did not require that we provide two lateral, because six-inch line is adequate for both property.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, again, just as a measure of compromise, that is the reason why I'm trying to bring a compromise to it, because the lot was one lot initially, and the request to split the lot, which triggered the connection of an additional, connection into the lateral was because of the lot split.
No, excuse me, that's, that's the point. Here is a copy, Ed, would you show that thing? That condition of approval at that time, 2006. They did not require, they did not require that we provide two lateral. Would you go?
Which one you want?
On, let's see, lateral. Yeah, see, the last page, go to the last page of that. See, right there. You see, on the, the comments from the wastewater, no comment, they, they accepted it. If they wanted to have another lateral, they would have specified. And the reason they did not, because they said the six-inch sewer line is large enough to accommodate both. We don't need two lateral. That is the condition of approval.
This was the condition of approval when you requested to lot split?
When I did the lot split, yeah. That was the final approval, yes. You know, when you get a subdivision or lot split, you'd go to the city, and then the planning, the staff review it, and they say, what we need to do. They say, do this thing, that thing, this, but this is a condition of approval, that nobody says I should put another lateral. And I vividly remember, they said, the six-inch line is adequate. It is adequate, really.
Counsel?
Yes.
I just wanted to jump in on this one point and remind the council that this issue was addressed in the staff report. The staff report states that, yes, there was no specific condition of approval under wastewater or water when the lot was split. However, one of the conditions of approval was that the applicant will comply with all laws, and one of the laws is our municipal code, which states that when a lot is split, two laterals are required, both to connect to the main and the adjacent street.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Cordova.
I don't have any further.
Okay. If there are no further questions for the applicant or for staff, we need to turn to public comment.
So, just a few other things to kind of put this in perspective. Six-inch sewer line doesn't seem very big if you aren't involved in flow rates and all those good things. So, just to make it simple, a six-inch sewer line serves the entire wine ghetto, all the way over, including the old Greco building. One six-inch line goes all the way through there and picks up all those. So, a six-inch line actually has, carries a lot of volume. To the city attorney's point, yeah, okay, that's technically correct. The city code runs, I don't know, 3,000 pages, maybe. I think it's probably the responsibility of the staff to identify those sort of things in an agreement. I suppose that's a good legal defense, because it does say follow all laws, but is it, is it reasonable and fair? Probably not. Probably not. How would you want to be treated if you were in this situation? To Mr. Sabani's point about having two six-inch stub outs, yeah, that probably would be better, but maybe no one realized that what was going to happen in the future. The Ouija board wasn't working that day, so I understand both sides of that. Clearly, that six-inch line is adequate for what needs to be done. It could be cambered, and it could be determined that it's in either good or bad condition. And some portion of it had to be replaced by the city when the old shallow line was taken out and this new, much deeper line was put in. So, it's entirely possible that most of the line Mr. Sabani is talking about was actually replaced by the city during that sewer project. So, if we put it in, isn't it therefore our line? And to what I mentioned last time, there are any number of places in Lompoc where there's a sewer line, even on private property, that's shared by multiple sewer customers. And there's one property, the old USA gas station, that has no sewer line, because when Caltrans was redoing H Street, they destroyed that line, and they asked the city if they needed to put it back, and the city said, nah, we'll have them connect somewhere else. So, you know, things happen, mistakes are made, and you guys have the duty and responsibility to figure out how to get through this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment and bring it back to discussion by council. Councilmember Cordova had made a recommendation. Not in support of that. This is not about the engineering. The engineering is very obvious that it will function as is and has created no problems. It's about setting precedence and making an exception. And a special covenant was made to delay the implementation of the split until the property was sold. Half of it has been taken care of by the applicant, the water. The sewer services are the next. Mr. Lynn is correct in that we don't have a Ouija board to better understand what will happen in the future, but we can, from this point forward, as often as possible, apply the rules equitably. And the rule on the books says that at the separation of this property, upon sale with the special covenant, that there will be a separate sewer line put in. So, again, I'm going to stand by my original motion to deny the appeal and look for a second on that. Seeing none, that motion fails, and I will open the floor to a second motion. Councilmember Cordova.
I feel that, can I ask one more question of staff?
Absolutely.
Mr. Wilkie. Is there a portion of the code, of the wastewater code, that allows for a special, you know, agreement to be made in a circumstance such as this or in any circumstance?
Well, I don't think there's anything in the code that does that, but the fact that we had a covenant that was recorded on the deed for the two parcels that said to delay what the code requires, I think something like that could be done as long as the end result, as you were saying, in the eventual sale of the back lot, that that, the connection for the back lot is separated from the front lot. So, that, I believe that could be something that could work.
Okay.
The city attorney is nodding and said, yes.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we make that special agreement and that we, in the event of the sale of the second lot now, that we have that connection done at that time. And if it's something that is supported, then I think that that would be, again, yet another compromise on behalf of the city that does show good faith towards the property owner.
So, we have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Cordova. Do we have a comment from staff?
Yeah, if the, I just want to bring up a point that our collection system made, and Mr. Lynn actually made a point about it too, is the cambering of that line. Right now, there is no maintenance access to that line for the camera system to work. So, at a minimum, the collection system would like to see a maintenance connection. The cleanout's not big enough to put the camera in, so there'd have to be some sort of maintenance manhole installed to allow for that.
Councilmember Vega.
In the middle of Councilwoman Cordova's motion, I'd like to hear from Mr. Sabani one more time in the middle of this motion. It's a really important decision here as far as to the recommendation, and I'd like to have his input. Apparently, you know, you heard wastewater's comment that said, hey, there's no access. So, if there was a delay put in here, a delay, Mr. Sabani, to implementation of this, to when you sell the property, is there another option here for the delay to put some sort
Yes, I have offered to build a manhole at the beginning of the line on the north side where our two property adjoining. That foot manhole would be sufficient to camber this 300-foot line. Would be a five-foot manhole. I've offered to do that. I'm not trying to give the city a hard time. I worked with them, believe me. I have worked for five, six months. They refused. They're not willing. I hated to bring the city council and cause you this headache. And this should have been resolved engineering-wise. Public Works Director, Building Department gave me a permit to do what I wanted to do, but unfortunately, staff at the Utility Department are determined to enforce the code, the building code.
So, Mr. Sabani, let's just be straight here. It looks like there's going to be a cost to this anyway.
Sure.
Okay? So, if there was some sort of an exception, I'm just asking in general, just to, out of respect for you and because of your background and knowledge and the fact that you've invested in Lompoc, so I wanted to ask you a direct question. If there was a covenant put in, in place that said, upon sale of your property in the back?
Yes.
Okay? That's something you can negotiate with your sale, okay? Someday, it's going to be a cost. But in the meantime, would there be an access?
Please, Councilman Cordova, I appreciate your suggestion. Would you please let me know, what would you, do I put another sewer line or put a manhole? What would you specify to do? I'm willing to get this thing off the dead center.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, my motion was to have the agreement, the initial agreement, to have the connection be made, what was agreed upon initially, to have the connection be made at the time of the sale of the second lot. But if we can get, per the request of Mr. Wilkie, and you have stated yourself that you're willing to do that and that you've offered that, I would modify my motion to reflect that we have that done now, to be able to have the manhole put in, be able to look at the line and determine, make sure that city feels comfortable that it is in good condition, and you, as the owner of the lot, to verify that it is in good condition, and that would be done now, and then ultimately, upon the sale of the second lot, that the connection take place at that time.
Well, if I'm building a manhole and the city is going to camber the line, I'm 100% sure the line is perfect. Then, to me, if you accept the line as a sewer line, as a six-inch sewer line, that would be fine. I'm willing to spend the money and build a manhole. And if the line has some repair or replacement, I'm willing to do that too. But I'd like to see the city accept that six-inch sewer line, provided I get, I give them a 10-foot easement. To me, that's a fair and equitable way of doing it. There is no need to abandon the six-inch sewer line is there.
Councilmember Vega.
Or alternately, you could, sorry, can I say something else? Alternately, to amend your motion, if you will consider, leave everything as it is, and in the event of sale of second property, then we will come, we can solve it, the city. If the city wants to reconstruct the six-inch line, to rebuild it, to make sure to the city, meet the city standard, I'm willing to do that too. But there is no point to go tear down Pine Avenue and tear down, go 14 feet deep and to put a sewer line. That doesn't, it is not sensible.
Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I agree that, I like the example that, and I appreciate the example that John Lynn presented, that the whole wine ghetto, which you own, that property, and I believe the hospital and all of that, they're using that size of a line. Is that correct, sir?
Six-inch line is adequate for 10 buildings like that. No, not, right now, as Mr. Lynn said, the six-inch line on Chestnut Avenue adequately provides services. But however, there are some congestion, because they connected that 70,000 square feet of winery on that side, plus the Home Depot and plus the hospital. That's an issue, but that's a different thing.
The second part of my question would be, is there, to Mr. Wilkie, is there another access that can be put into that line, to your knowledge, other than a manhole, or is a full manhole required for you guys to use your camera equipment, okay? Is it some sort of a cleanout, or is it the same thing? Am I just, maybe you could clarify what we're thinking here, as far as a manhole?
Give me one second.
I said, I've offered to build a manhole anywhere in that line the city wants. I will put a manhole for them to have access, yeah.
The city attorney was commenting to me that with the suggestion that Councilmember Cordova has about just delaying the installation of the second, installation of the lateral that is for the second property, so there's two laterals, one to each property, by delaying that, the first lateral really wouldn't have to have any kind of modifications to it until that sale happens. So, and that's why I was concerned about if there's some sort of activity in that back lot of a rent to some entity that has sewage activity, then there would be two going through that one lateral. So, that was my concern about having a use in the back building, not just saying it until it's sold. So, that's why I brought that up the first time.
And just to clarify, Mr. Wilkie, the history is of that line, as far as you know, or we've heard Mr. Sabani state, that there's been relatively no activity in that sewer location. Is that correct? Something we can verify?
Well, I believe there's no current tenant in the back.
It's not an issue there, right? Okay. Yeah, so it's been a clean line, is what I'm asking, as far as the history that you know of. There hasn't been any other, Mr. Sabani has stated there has nothing?
Without having the ability to camber it, there's really, looking into the cleanout might give you a little bit of indication at the cleanout, but without being able to camber it, and there's no way the camera can climb up the line from the sewer main?
And I understand that, but what I'm saying, as far as the history of that line, it's, as Mr. Sabani has stated, that it's relatively been a trouble-free line to date, regardless of the cambering of it or whatever, as far as from your knowledge?
There is no access.
I really don't know.
No, I got you. I'm talking about, he hasn't had any stoppages or backups.
There's nothing I'm aware of, but I really didn't look into that.
That's all I'm asking. I understand there's no access, but I just want to know, there hasn't been a history of anything going on in that sewer?
I can't answer that, but to my knowledge, nobody has brought that up to my attention, that there was, there has been a recent issue.
Yeah, I've recently sold a couple of homes that were older that didn't have a cleanout access, and you'd have one if there was an issue, pretty much.
I'm not disputing that. I just don't, I personally don't have any knowledge of whether it's clean or not clean or...
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, again, I've heard that Mr. Sabani is willing to put in a manhole to be able to inspect the line, to put, to allow the city the comfort of mind and to know in factual, in factual, what the condition of the line is currently. I think that is fair, and if he's willing to do it, I think that that is something that is reasonable, and I thank you for that. And I think I also heard, just recently from you, that worst-case scenario, you're willing to comply upon the sale of the second parcel. So, my motion stands that if we can, I guess, move the current agreement for a later time as to when the second parcel is sold, and allow Mr. Sabani to install the manhole, that would allow the city the access to look at the line of the condition today, and I think that that's reasonable.
Councilmember Starbuck.
All we're going to do is encumber the property later on. I'm still, I'm going to go back to the basics here. It's not broke, but let's fix it. The motion should be pretty straightforward here. You know, I mean, if I was going to make a motion right now, which I'm very tempted to, but you would need a second on yours, is to add a section to the municipal code allowing the deviation, ask Mr. Sabani to add a cleanout. We don't need a manhole or any major construction, and we grant the appeal.
So, I will give Councilmember Cordova her second. Any additional questions or substitute motion, Mr. Starbuck?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Just to clarify the motion, it's essentially to take the covenant we have now, to delay it until the time that the back parcel on Oak is sold, sold only and not rented, and then to require Mr. Sabani to install a manhole for access. I'm not clear on when that manhole needs to be installed. Are we talking about that right now, or are we talking about when the back parcel is sold?
I believe it was immediately.
Yeah.
It would be now.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to reference Mr., Councilman Starbuck's notation as far as for substitute motion. I do agree with Councilman Starbuck that there's no issue at this time, so an exception to the rule would be something that we could do to the municipal code, and this thing all goes away.
So, we have a substitute motion on the floor. Councilmember Cordova.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I don't understand what the substitute motion was. Could you repeat it for me, please?
Sure. I believe it was to take Councilmember Starbuck's recommendation to put an exception into our municipal code that would allow us to make exceptions in this scenario, to allow the city to take the last few feet. Is that what I understood your motion to be originally, Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, it would allow us, the utility director, to have the ability to do a deviation to the municipal code on something like this property. And part of the motion was to add a cleanout. We don't think we need a whole manhole or any of that. And then it was to grant the appeal in favor of Mr. Sabani.
Did that help? Do you agree with that, Councilmember Vega, for your substitute motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So, we have a substitute motion on the floor, and if I remember the rules correctly, we must first vote to vote on the substitute motion?
My interpretation of Robert's rules is that you just vote on the substitute motion right after it was seconded.
Okay.
I do want to clarify, though, what the substitute motion is going to be. It's going to be, as I understand it, that it's a motion basically to amend the municipal code to allow for circumstances when one lateral can be connected to a main for two parcels. And what we're going to have to do is make the granting of Mr. Sabani's appeal conditioned on the council approving that amendment to the municipal code. And when the the council approves that amendment to the municipal code, then Mr. Sabani's appeal will automatically be granted.
That is the way I understand it. Is that correct, Mr. Starbuck and Mr. Vega?
I actually agree with an attorney.
Yes, I actually agree with that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay. So... I'm making sure there's clarity on the legality of the motion. So was that official second from Mr. Starbuck, I believe? Because Vega made the original motion, we asked for clarity. Did you second it?
I will, but I thought I made the original motion.
Well, you did, but then Councilmember Vega actually made it into a motion because you said you would consider making a motion. So you didn't actually make the motion.
Yeah, I know Vega's pretty smart. I'll second it.
All right. So Councilmember Vega took your insight and made it an official motion, and you, then saying how smart he was, have now seconded it. So we have clarity from our attorney. I'm hoping the city clerk now has clarity as to what the motion is. Any further discussions or questions? Councilmember Cordova?
And as a reminder, that if we fall stalemate here right now on either one of these votes, then it reverts back to the initial. So just a reminder.
Thank you. All right. Any further questions? All right, we are voting on the substitute motion. Please vote.
Okay, so that motion failed, so that means we go back to the original motion, which was Councilmember Cordova's motion, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Which was to essentially take the covenant we have now that says that the second lateral has to be installed now, because the one property's been sold, and delay that until the back parcel is sold, and require Mr. Sabani to install a manhole for access right now.
Correct. Any questions for staff? Any discussion among council? Councilmember Cordova?
Again, as a reminder, if we don't reach an agreement, Mr. Sabani will go back to being required to do what is in the agreement currently.
Councilmember Vega?
Again, I think it's prudent for us to know that man made these rules and man can change them. I think what we're asking is not unreasonable, knowing the circumstances, and I agree, I understand, the impasse, but any of these ordinances and any of these rules and regulations can be changed. That's why we're all here. The public comment is here, we're listening, and even though in the effort of compromise, I just wanted to make that clear, okay? These things can be changed without setting a precedence.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Can we repeat the original motion?
Councilmember Cordova's motion is to extend the current covenant to the sale of the second property that he now solely owns, and immediately put in a manhole in order to provide camera access.
Just a question on the motion. Why are we going to put in the manhole now if we're going to waive the requirement on the line?
The request was from staff in order to be able to access and begin to evaluate the property, maintain it if need access, now that it is to separate owners, if I'm understanding correctly. Staff?
The conversation that we had back here basically said, I believe that's not going to be required. We don't have to have it if the purpose of the delay is to allow for the back property not to use the existing lateral until it's sold, so...
Okay. So there was a slight misunderstanding after that conversation. So Councilmember Cordova?
So again, in the spirit of compromise, I would like to then remove the request that Mr. Sabani be required, or that he so graciously offered to put in the manhole to review the line and the condition of the line. It is not required at that time, at this time, and then it could be moved to then the agreement upon the sale of the second lot, that the work take place at that time.
Okay. I will second your amendment to your motion. Councilmember Vega?
Mr. Sabani mentioned another caveat in one of his recommendations, that at the time of sale of the property, he wishes to be able to, and I don't think that we can disallow this, that he wanted to approach staff at that time also, in the spirit of compromise, to say he'd like to come back and ask staff to come back and say, has there been any maintenance issues? And again, maybe at that time, yes, we're agreeing to this, but at that time, he can come back and ask staff, hey, maybe things will change by the time he sells this property, and see if there's a way of, at that time, of reaching a compromise or putting amendment in the municipal code at that time.
That can happen at any time. You are correct.
That's correct, and I just wanted to re-clarify that. So at that time, Mr. Sabani, just in the effort, in the essence of compromise here, just to repeat and reiterate, at that time, you, no one can take that right away from you to appeal to council at that time for that line.
Any more questions or comments? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for zero, and we will take a...
Mayor, just before we take a break, I just want to note that we are going to bring back a written resolution granting the appeal, as stated by Councilmember Cordova's motion, at the next meeting, and put it on the consent calendar.
Thank you so much for that clarification. We will take a 10-minute break, and upon the return from break, Mr. Mosby will join us on the deus again. Mr. Sabani?
Item number nine is consideration of planning commission recommendations for approval of the comprehensive update of Title 17 zoning of the Longpoke Municipal Code, adoption of resolution numbers 6258 (19) and 6259 (19), introduction of ordinances number 1665
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. That is a mouthful, and I just want to start off by saying thank you. Thank you that this item can return to the council. It was last, at the council, on February 19th, and we were given specific direction to return this item, the update to the zoning code, back to the planning commission. You'll see in the staff report that there are specific items that the council wanted the planning commission to weigh in on, and they did. So what we're going to do is, we're going to tag-team a short presentation. I know it's already a long night, so we're going to do a short presentation and go from there. So I'm going to go ahead and give it to Jennifer with Lisa Weis Consulting, and I'll do the latter part of the presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question.
Oh, Councilmember Cordova has a question.
I was just going to make a suggestion that because of the amount of information